Okay, so, welcome councillors. I would like to run through some housekeeping arrangements. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed to the council's YouTube channel. The stream will be available to watch after the meeting has ended. By attending the meeting, you are giving your consent to being filmed, and a notice with further information has been provided in the public gallery. May I also ask for tonight, for you to be patient as the Democratic Services Team are still learning the system. As mayor, I have agreed that members can remain seated while speaking at the meeting to ensure good sound quality. Under the openness of local government bodies' regulations, people may film, record, post or blog this meeting, and this is outside the council's control. I would also like to remind councillors and the other people attending the meeting that the fire exits are to the rear and side of the room. There are no fire alarm tests planned for this evening. Could I also ask that everyone turns off their mobile phones or switches them to silence so that the meeting isn't disturbed? If I could also point out as well, it's been noted, the toilets upstairs are out of order. So for everybody, anybody who wants the toilet to go downstairs, please, thank you. So the first item on the agenda is apologies for absence. I've had apologies from the following older women and older men. Henri Oldham and Bush, Stott and Tormey. I've also had apologies from the following councillors, Harper Davis, Popley and Woodward. Are there any other apologies, please? Thank you. I'd now like to ask Emily from Living Without Abuse to offer some words of reflection and to come up here. She's from Living Without Abuse, which as most of you know is one of my chosen charities. The other one, Baintocks Trust, Loughborough.
Yep, is it working? Cool. Okay, so yes, thank you, thank you for having me, thank you very much, Mayor of Charmwood. My name's Emily, I'm head of fundraising at Living Without Abuse, a charity which was established in 1977. We support victims of domestic abuse and/or sexual violence in Leicester City, Leicestershire and Rutland, irrespective of gender, age, ethnicity etc. By way of introduction to some of our clients, I'd like to read a poem. The poem's called Hollow Man. Beware the love of hollow man who kicked himself by tin-can man. Is as a shadow stands to stare, no love, no care inside is there. He aches to feel and thinks to find the perfect bind inside a mind, but cannot live to love, to feel, but catch a soul on his tight reel. He picks a trusting soul to listen, mining hurts for gems that glisten, plastic words with hooded lies concealing truth to fish lens eyes. He tugs the string to test the line, compares his power against its shine. He binds the tail and cuts the fin, but cannot grasp the soul within. He grabs the guts and cuts them deep and throws them in his coat to keep. It doesn't fill the void in him, the next one will, it echoes in. He checks his keep, prepares to play, his new catch won't escape away. And as he turns to prime his line, his smug wide grin begins to shine. The old catch lies in still abandon, breathing in the silent canyon. Yet in his mind she cannot be, you are anyone to me. He'll grow old, his need grow greater. None can fill this loving hater, then as he turns, her soft heart slips into the deep, her shine eclipsed. Deeper, deeper down she sinks, her soft scales soothed in warm black ink. She flicked her tail from strength within and quickly darts to light that's dim. Then out of silent ink the dawn, silverness begins to spawn, shimmering shining scales that glisten for her heartbeat's soul to listen. That poem was written by an LWA client called Sarah who used poetry to express her thoughts and feelings as she recovered from a 27-year-long abusive relationship. And Sarah is doing really well now, by the way. Domestic abuse will affect one in four women and one in six men in their lifetime. It leads on average to two women being murdered each week in the UK and 30 men each year. It accounts for 16% of all violent crime. However, it is still the violent crime least likely to be reported to the police. It has more repeat victims than any other crime. On average, there will be 35 assaults before a victim calls the police. It is the single most quoted reason for people becoming homeless. In addition, approximately 400 people take their own life each year who've attended hospital for domestic abuse injuries in the previous six months. And 200 of these attend hospital on the day they go on to take their own life. So do organisations like Living Without Abuse make any difference to statistics like these? Well, each year at LWA, we support around 9,000 clients, including children who've been impacted by domestic abuse. And I'd like to read a letter to you, which we received recently from one of our clients who was being signed off by their outreach worker. A farewell message from a client to her outreach worker. I shall always be eternally grateful for the support and encouragement you have given to me since we met. You've been such a positive and stable force in my life when I needed it most. You are the big reason why I'm still a functioning and now a thriving person. You go out and serve the one, but by doing that, you impact the lives of so many, my children being the main benefactors of your work. You've helped me to protect them. You've helped me to become a stronger and less naive person. You have taken me by the hand from a place of darkness and brought me to a light and safe place. I'm a better person because of you and because of LWA's guidance. Like a stone being thrown into a puddle, you create positive waves and ripples into the lives of others and to whole communities. I will also respect and love all you have done for me and with my life, whatever it becomes. I will always honour you and have the greatest of thanks. This is the end, but it's also the beginning. Keep being a warrior for others, you make a big difference. And you as individuals may be sitting there thinking, but what can I do? There is a great deal that all of you here can do to support these vulnerable people in our local community, many of whom flee with just the clothes on their backs, having endured unspeakable times. First and foremost, you can read up on domestic abuse and sexual violence and spread the word. It's okay to talk about domestic abuse. It's a great place to start, looking just at the LWA website. And why not follow us on social media? We're on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram and LinkedIn. And there are regular posts about our campaigns, our appeals, our updates, thank yous to donors and fundraisers. So you can like these, comment on them and start a conversation. And why not volunteer or organise your own fundraiser or donation day? Individuals, clubs and businesses organise a range of fundraisers from bake sales to skydiving to row-a-thons. Just have a chat with me and of course, it's an absolute huge thank you to our mayor here today, Julie Bradshaw, for choosing LWA for one of her civic charities. Thank you so much, Julie, for making a difference. Since taking on my role of head of fundraising, I've been amazed and humbled by the generosity of so many and the care with which they support our clients. I've also been inspired by the resilience and positivity of our clients as they start to take control of their own lives once more. In conclusion, I'd like to finish with another poem written by Elizabeth Shane, who's a survivor of childhood sexual abuse. Elizabeth writes of herself, I never realised until recently that I've spent most of my life looking down. Looking down through shame, through fear, through self-loathing and feeling too vulnerable for people to look into my eyes and my heart in case they saw the darkness I felt. I never realised how the impact of being abused affected my mental health growing up into adulthood. The constant desire to overdose, self-harm, not realising I was experiencing PTSD as well as anxiety and a form of OCD and depression. For a long time, I wondered what it was like not to wear the heavy anchor of shame around my neck as a survivor of sexual abuse. I spent much of my adulthood trying to reconcile what happened to me with various councillors and psychiatrists telling me it wasn't my fault. I wanted to believe them, I really did. I read the self-help books, I kept telling myself it wasn't my fault, but did this ring true? No. Instead, I carried around a secret burden that I couldn't eradicate, no matter how hard I tried. I grew up thinking I was a sinner for loving my abuser, for loving them both, that I deserved what happened to me. And it's taken me over 40 years to finally acknowledge that what happened as a child was not my fault. I no longer need to keep quiet. I sing, I perform in dramatic arts and I write poetry about my journey and it's given me a voice. I will never allow anyone to push me back into a corner forgotten. My story is mine to share with others to give them strength to know there is light on the other side. Everyone deserves a voice and a right to be heard. I'm not only meant to survive, but thrive and speak my truth so others can take hope and comfort that they are not walking through the storm alone. Elizabeth's poem's called A Brave Heart. Do not be afraid to make a sound. Shadows may strike in the stillness of night, but do not interpret silence as the weakest link in a chain. Forces gather strengthened in a rested soul. Reach out, make a noise, be heard. A brave heart needs no permission to beat in a pounding chest. Why now, you may ask, why not then? Only when you tear away from the eyes of a hypnotic gaze can the mist clear from a blackened window. Take a bite of a rosy red apple, poison will no longer seep through your veins. Taste the truth of crimson, daring and bold, an aphrodisiac of mind, enticing yet sweet. See how far a dream can travel in an open road that knows no bounds. Set the world on fire in a blaze of glory, destination not required. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Emily, that was beautiful. I will now move on to item two. Disclosures of pecuniary interests and other registrable and non-registrable interests. For information, disclosable pecuniary interests and registrable interests relate to entries that are included or should be included on a councillor's register of interest. Non-registrable interests relate to any other matters. I will now call on the chief executive to report on disclosures of interests in the business to be considered at this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have had no disclosures made prior to the meeting, are there any please? councillor Mayor? councillor Mayor? councillor Taylor as well. councillor Taylor, please.
Yeah, I've got a registrable interest on eight point one, position statement of a member of LSA.
Thank you. councillor Seaton? Thank you. And councillor Fryer?
A registrable interest as a member on eight one as a member of Leicestershire County Council.
Thank you, councillors.
Okay, thank you. So item three, minutes of the previous meeting. I move that the minutes of the extraordinary meeting of the council and the ordinary meeting of the council held on the fourth of November, 2024 be confirmed and signed as the correct record.
I second the minutes, Madam Mayor.
Does anyone wish to raise anything on the accuracy of the minutes? If so, please state the minute number. councillor?
I'm sorry, in the previous item, I have coffee com呎ers because I'm a member of the county council. So I don't know why it didn't come up, sorry.
Okay, previous item. Okay, thank you. So the minutes of the meeting, does, we take that, there's no issues being raised. So I take this to signify that the minutes are accepted as the correct record. Thank you. I will now sign the official minutes I have here with me and pass to the head of democracy for archiving. The next item is item four announcements. Mayor's announcements. I have the following announcements to make. I would like to invite members to my civic service on Thursday, the twenty-third of January, at All Saints with Holy Trinity Parish Church, Steeple Row, Loughborough, commencing at seven o'clock. And please be in your seats for six forty-five. I would also like to invite members to a Burns Night Supper on Saturday, the twenty-fifth of January, in aid of Living Without Abuse. This will take place at Woodhouse East Village Hall and will commence at seven o'clock. The Holocaust Memorial Day Commemoration will be on Monday, the twenty-seventh of January, at the Banstand in Queens Park, Loughborough, commencing at twelve noon. I hope some of you can make it. And finally, I would like to invite members to a charity dinner to be held on the twenty-first, Friday, the twenty-first of March, 2025. The dinner will be in aid of Living Without Abuse and will be held at Corn Graings Hotel, starting at seven o'clock. And it will be absolutely fantastic to see some of you there. There will be a link to book and this will be sent out next week. Item four point two, leaders' announcements. I call on the leader to make his announcements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am making a speech tonight that sounds sadly similar, similar to one I made last January. Once again, Charmwood has been hit badly by flooding and scores of homes and businesses have been impacted. Many areas were affected, including Loughborough, Vaughan, Seaston, East Goscombe, Fannyborough, Rothley and Avon. In Barrow, a severe flood warning was issued by the Environment Agency, meaning there was a risk to life and significant disruption to communities. In some areas of the county, there was double the amount of rain in twenty-four hours that was, that we had last year with Storm Henk. Along with melting snow that led to systems not being able to cope with the sheer volume of water, sadly rivers, canals and brooks burst their banks. Over two hundred and fifty homes and businesses were affected in our borough. Many people are still cleaning up the damage and that work will continue for many weeks and months to come. Our own properties were also affected, with over twenty council homes flooded, some which were still undergoing repairs from last year. Loughborough Leisure Centre was also hit and had to close for a short period. I would like to extend my sympathies to all those affected, particularly those who were experiencing the same devastating consequences of flooding a year on from 2024. As a council, we have responded to help the affected areas. However, it is worth remembering that many different agencies are involved when dealing with flooding. Each have different roles and responsibilities. At Charmwood, officers and our contractors were working around the clock to support communities. Through our contractors, we were able to deliver sandbags to vulnerable people and keep watercourses on our land clear. We also worked with John Sora House in Loughborough and the Methodist Church Hall in Barrow to set up rest centres for those households impacted immediately by flooding. I would like to thank both organisations for their quick response and hard work to offer a safe and warm space for residents. Our officers have visited all flooded areas to speak to residents, signed both them to information and gathered information on the flooding. We also made around two hundred phone calls to vulnerable people to carry out welfare checks. The clean-up operation is continuing, with street cleaning taking place in all the towns and villages affected. We have also arranged free bulky waste collections for residents whose furniture and household items were damaged due to flooding. We have worked alongside Leicestershire County Council, the Environment Agency, the Canal and River Trust, emergency services and many others to respond to these floods. We will continue to work with them on the recovery of the area. All council leaders have also called for the government funding for our communities and I also met with the Secretary of State, Stephen Reid, to show him firsthand the damage that flooding has caused to Cornwall. Like our communities, we want to understand why Charmwood has been hit so hard again. We need the experts to investigate, identify the issues and find solutions. The only way to secure funding and support is by gathering evidence. The Environment Agency and the County Council, as the local lead flood authority, are the agencies who will lead these investigations. I will be writing to them and asking them for assurances these investigations will take place in a timely manner. We will fully support that work. Any significant flood defence measures will need government funding and that's where the evidence will be critical. This is a significant issue for the borough and county and we all must work together to find solutions for our communities. If there is one good thing that to come out of this, then it is to, that, sorry. If there is one good thing to come out of this, then it is the demonstration of the wonderful community spirit that exists in Charmwood. It has been inspiring to see people rally around to help their friends, family and neighbours during a time of real need. The emergency services were also out in the worst of the weather to protect and support people and other agencies have also played their role. I would also like to thank all those councillors that got involved in their communities to help them and support them at that time. I know several of you contacted me during the event. So thank you very much and thank you for helping your, your communities, your local wards and your local areas. So on behalf of Charmwood Borough Council, I'd like to thank everybody who was involved during the time of the flood in supporting our residents and overcome them. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four point three, chief executive's announcements. I call on the chief executive to make his announcements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no announcements to make.
The next item is item five petitions. I understand that councillor Andy Dent is handing in a petition on behalf of residents in his ward about a footpath on Worcester Avenue, Meadow Lane, Burstall. Councillor Dent, please hand the petition to our civic officer. Thank you. Are there any other petitions to be presented? Okay, the petition will be considered and responded to in accordance with the council's petition scheme. Item, item six point one, Treasury Management Strategy and Annual Investment Strategy, page seventeen. I call on councillor Ashcroft to propose the item.
Okay, Madam Mayor, for the reasons set out on page seventeen of the agenda, I move that council notes the mid-year review of the Treasury Management Strategy Statement, Prudential Borrowing and Treasury Indica- Strategy, as set out in part B.
Thank you. Thank you. So if any councillors would like to speak, please indicate using your console. councillor Seaton?
I didn't touch it, honestly.
Maybe not then, councillor Seaton.
There's no speakers here.
Okay, good. So there's no speakers. councillor Tilletson, you said you reserved your right. Would you like to say anything?
I have nothing to add, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I call on councillor Ashcroft to sum up.
Well, as there was no discussion, I don't think there's anything to sum up. So I think we just need to go to vote, but I do recommend people support this.
Thank you. So I'm now putting the motion to the votes. Please use your consoles to vote. We're just checking with the team. Okay, so the motion is carried. That's unanimous. Item six point two, Capital Plan Amendment Report, page thirty-nine. I call on councillor Ashcroft to propose the item.
Madam Mayor, for the reasons three, five, six and seven, set out in the minutes of the cabinet meeting on the twelfth of December, 2024, I move the recommendations three, five, six and seven, also set out in the minutes of-
I second this, Madam Mayor, and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. So if any councillors would like to speak, please indicate using your console. Okay, so again, no speakers. councillor Baines, sorry.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I think I'd particularly like to welcome the Warm Homes Fund. I think that item is really important, particularly in view of the fact that some of our pensioners are not able to, have had the winter fuel allowance removed. And I'm just wondering, I don't know, it's a question, but I'm just wondering to what extent that there's been given this, this money. So that's something I'd be interested in knowing more about in due course.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers? So if I have no other speakers, oh councillor Boca?
Yeah, just for information, I read only yesterday or the day before that Lincolnshire have, council have given out air fryers to all their vulnerable people because, of course, it's a lot cheaper to cook their food than normal avons, et cetera, et cetera. And I wondered if it's something the council could consider for vulnerable, older people in our borough.
Thank you councillor Boca. Anybody else? So if there's no other speakers, councillor Hamilton, you reserved your right. Would you like to say anything?
I observed the, the statements made previously, but I have nothing further to add at this stage.
Okay, thank you. So I'll, and I've gone councillor Ashcroft to, to sum up.
Okay, as well, as well, I'd like to thank councillor Baines and Boca for the comments and take those on board, but I don't think they actually affect any of the recommendations of this motion. So again, go to people to support this motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm now putting the motion to the votes. Again, please use your consoles to vote. Okay, great. So the, the vote is carried. Item six point three, Independent Remuneration Panel Members Allowances, page fifty-six. I call on councillor Jadeja to propose the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, to ensure compliance with the Local Authorities' Members Allowance England Regulations 2003, I move that the council considers recommendations of the Independent Remuneration Panel submitted in accordance with the Local Authorities' Members Allowance England Regulations 2003 as set out in Annex A and agrees to adopt the proposed scheme of members' allowance for the financial year 2025 and 26 as set out in Appendix B. Thank you.
I have to second Madam Mayor and reserve my right. Thank you.
So if any councillors would like to speak, please indicate using your console. councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say I'm very glad to see that the travel expenses are being put back in. I think I've raised this every year since they were removed. And I think it shows that we're willing to support those councillors that live on the edges of the borough and that have to travel quite a way to get here. And also hope those people that don't have the funding to travel to these meetings will get support.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Apologies first. I won't be able to come to your service, civic service. It's planning that night. So unfortunately, could I give you directly my apologies?
Thank you.
Just for clarity on this item, would the proposal just confirm that the three point five increase applies not only to the basic allowance but to the special responsibility allowance as well? And has the three point five officer increase been agreed? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Snodgrass, I just said it's, in the report, it's up to the officers. Pay rise hasn't been set yet. So when it is set, that's what our pay rise will be as well. Our increase in our allowance will be, and yes, it will apply to all allowances under the members' allowance scheme. And councillor Taylor, yeah, I think I welcome the mileage is coming back because I could never understand why we would make it more difficult for our councillors to attend council meetings. And yeah, so it was, it was odd when the previous administration took it away. But, you know, it's glad it's back now. And, and everybody should be able to, to claim that mileage from April going forward. Thank you.
So I now call on councillor Jadeja to sum up, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Taylor for recognising that this administration is very keen to support members to attend through travel expenses being paid. I recommend that the meeting approves this paper. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I'm now putting the motion to the votes. Please use your consoles to vote. We're just resetting, so just be patient, please. Thank you.
Is it working? So if you have to vote by hand.
Okay, so could we revert to the old style of voting by hands? So could I have all those in favour? All those, thank you, all those against? And any abstentions? So the motion is carried. Thank you, old style. Item six point four, Member Development Strategy, page seventy-five. I call on councillor Jadeja to propose the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this administration is committed to expanding on diversity and inclusion for those who are underrepresented in our members and for them to be offered a developmental offer that is both expansive and inclusive. Was awarded the East Midlands Member Development Charter in 2024 last year. We are keen to ensure that we proactively engage with underrepresented groups when encouraging people to become councillors. And that means that we, our offer needs to be supportive and engaged with members to provide opportunities prior to becoming a councillor. Upscaling, providing resilience, as this is a difficult role. Upscaling, providing resilience, as this is a difficult role, providing knowledge and information in a timely manner. Madam Mayor, to enable the strategy which sets out to ensure that there is support for all members to enable them to acquire this knowledge and to maximise their ability and capacity and to be adopted into the council's member development activity, I move that the Member Development Strategy 2024 to 2028 as set out in Annex A of the report attached be approved. Thank you.
I second this, Madam Mayor, and reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. So if any councillors would like to speak, please indicate using your console. Councillor Paul Baines?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to welcome this. It's a detailed action plan. There's a lot of positive learning here, I think, from the review that we had. And it looks really, really good. And I think it will genuinely help us move forward in what's been a difficult time and what will probably be an even more difficult time ahead. So thanks very much for this.
Any other speakers? Okay, so are no other speakers. I'll call on councillor Beverley Gray. You reserved your right.
Nothing further to add, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jadeja?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do ask members to take up the opportunities in this members' strategy and reinforce the quote that's in the foreword of the strategy. Tell me and I forget, teach me and I remember, involve me and I learn. I am very keen for members to support this strategy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I'm now putting the motion to the votes. I believe we can use our consoles. Yes, I'm getting a nod from down there. So could we vote now, please?
Oh, not quite.
Not quite.
Let's go straight to the result without anyone voting. I think we do old fashioned then.
Right, okay, let's do the old style again. So all those in favour? Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? So the motion is truly carried. So item 6.5 Pay Policy Statement 2025 to 26, page 107. I call on councillor Meir to propose the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To ensure that the council meets its obligations under Section 38 of the Localism Act 2011 and to review and update the LGPS discretionary policies as required by the Leicestershire LGPS Pension Section, I move that the pay policy statement for 2025/26, including the revisions to the LGPS discretionary policies attached as an annex, be approved.
Councillor Snodgrass?
Madam Mayor, I second the pay policy statement 2025/26. Members may wish to note that the papers for this meeting, this was an item on the Personnel Committee meeting Tuesday, the 17th of December 2024. Personnel Committee resolved to, for the pay policy statement for 2025/26, including the revision to the local government pension scheme discretionary policies, be approved. And finally, that the recruitment and retention policy be amended to include details outlining that the golden hello payment would not be expected to be repaid in the event of the death in service. I thought that might be interesting to members. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. If any other councillors would like to speak, please indicate using your console. Okay, so we go back to councillor Meir to sum up, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm now putting the motion to the votes. Are we ready with the console or is it hands again?
It flashed up and then went off. I think we'll stick with the five hands.
Stick with the hands then. So can he show me, please? All those in favour? Thank you. Any against? Or any abstentions? Thank you. So the motion is carried. Okay, item 6.6 Amendment to Election Fees for 2025 to 26, page 135. I call on councillor Meir to propose the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To ensure an approved scale of fees can be applied in respect of any local council elections and by-elections which take place during 2025/26, I move that the scale of election fees and expenses appended to this report be adopted for 2025/26.
Councillor Boca? Thank you. Do you reserve your rights or? Okay, just checking. Okay. So are there any other speakers? So I'm now putting the mo... Sorry, you've not reserved your right. Back to councillor Meir.
Nothing further to add.
Nothing further to add. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, both of you. Right, so could you show your hands, please? I'm now putting the motion to the votes. Oh, are we backing on?
Right, okay.
Right. We're on, let's use the console again. So please use them. We're just one short.
Vote's closed at 48.
Vote's closed at 48. So that's unanimous, so that's carried. Item 6.7 Polling Places Review, page 141. So I call on councillor Meir to propose the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To ensure that any amended arrangements for polling districts, polling places and polling stations are in place for the Leicestershire County Council elections in May 2025, we hold our breath, I move that the proposals of the chief executive are set out in the annex to this report, which are put forward in his capacity as the returning officer for elections for polling districts, polling places and polling stations at the Leicestershire County Council election be approved.
Okay, thank you. So any other speakers? Otherwise, I'm putting them... Otherwise, I'm putting it back to councillor Meir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. So I'm now putting the motion to the vote. We can use our consoles again.
Yeah, yes, we can. Yeah.
Fabulous. So motion's carried. Excellent. Item 6.8 Confirmment of the Title of Honorary Freeman, page 212. Before I ask the proposer to speak on this item, I would like to draw councillors' attention to page 213 and note that Mr Richard Shepherd was leader of the council from May 1990 to 95 and not from 1991 to 95, as stated. So I call on councillor Meir, please, to propose the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It would be a pleasure to consider in principle whether to confer...
And sorry, and that subject to one above, the ceremony takes place at a special meeting of the council at 6.30pm on the 14th of April 2025, or a future date as to be agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anything else? Somebody else wants to say? Councillor Fox?
Hello there. Just to say that this is very welcomed. Myself and councillor Wesley are the current borough councillors for Cornwall. And just to put our support behind this, he's an incredibly well-respected member of our borough. And it's an absolute pleasure to see this recommendation and that being recognised. So we really do welcome that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so I call on councillor Meir to sum up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just echo what councillor Fox has said. I just wanted to, actually, no further questions, but we will have the ceremony in April or a future date to be agreed if the county elections are referred. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm now putting the motion to the votes. Please use your consoles. Okay, great. So we're doing well here. So that's motion is carried. Congratulations, Mr Shepherd, Mr Richard Shepherd. Item 7 Calling References. There are no calling references from scrutiny. Right, so item 8 Position Statements. A position statement about the devolution white paper is printed on page three of the supplementary agenda. The statement will be introduced and after that councillors, if you wish to, can speak for up to two minutes each and the discussions can last for up to 20 minutes. At the end of the discussion, there will be a summary. Can we also just, can we also please avoid any repetition of whatever anybody said before, please? That would be most appreciated. So 8.1 Devolution White Paper. I call on councillor Meir to introduce the position statement regarding the devolution white paper.
Cheers. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. In December 2024, the Ministry of Communities, Housing and Local Government published the English Devolution White Paper. The White Paper restates government's ambition that all areas will ultimately have a mayoral strategic authority. The White Paper also references local government reorganisation and states that councils in all 21 two-tier areas will be expected to reorganise over this parliament and the next. The government intends reorganisation to happen in a phased approach with the first unitary councils expected before the end. Reorganisation is not a requirement of devolution, but the government has indicated it will prioritise areas where reorganisation can unlock devolution. The White Paper does not set out any specific, or sorry, any other specific criteria for acceptable reorganisation proposals. The government will not impose reorganisations in any areas, but it will write to all principal councils imminently and encourage initial proposals to be submitted. It is implicitly assumed within the government proposal that the merger of the Shire District and County Councils will improve service delivery and create financial efficiencies. This is likely true for some services, but removal of district councils risks the new unitary authorities becoming detached from local communities and the local aspects of place that are particularly valued by our residents. It is also fair to note that the merger of operational functions undertaken by multiple existing organisations is likely to be very complex, time-consuming and expensive, such that financial savings may not be realised in the short and medium term. Charmwood Borough Council has alongside the other districts and borough councils long supported the devolution of powers from Westminster. The creation of new strategic authorities aligns with this existing positions. In the statement issued on the 9th of January 2025, Leicestershire County Council confirmed that it had requested the government to postpone the elections planned for May this year until May 2026. We can be confident that the government wishes for areas to come forward with proposals to create new unitary authorities in place of existing county and district borough councils. It is understood that the government's timetable for this priority programme waived in 2027 and further reorganisation in 2028 possibly also extended beyond this date. For planning purposes and based on the national position, we could assume that 2028 is the most likely date for reorganisation in Leicestershire and Rutland and the creation of a new unitary council. However, there is reasonable proposition that 2027 is the target date set by this government. And just one final point, Madam Mayor. If local government reorganisation should happen, Loughborough is the only unparished, largest unparished area in the borough. And it's our proposal that should reorganisation happen, that we would look at considering creating a Loughborough Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you. So if any councillors would like to speak, please indicate using your console. Councillor Rattray, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was shocked to see the statement that Leicestershire County Council put out with their proposal offering up some areas of the county to the city. Being a resident of and councillor of Burstel, I'm very concerned this appears to be being done without consultation. As first of all, it is safe to assume that it may be one of the areas given up and the city boundary moved to include Burstel and other areas bordering the city. During discussions at Cabinet, the leader confirmed that Charmwood had not entered into any conversations over boundary changes with the city and promised to inform more councillors of affected areas if we get to that stage. Burstel is a village and should not be swallowed up within the city boundary. I support the idea of a strategic mayoral authority but could not support any reorganisation which would move Burstel into the city borders. I look forward to seeing the alternative proposals for reorganisation put forward by Charmwood and the other districts.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, councillor Needham, I believe, first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it working? Okay. Yeah, good. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say on behalf of our group that we aren't really supportive of this local government reorganisation or that it appears to be being railroaded through and with no real meaningful consultation. I think that the issue is not two-tier council structures or how big or how small they are. The issue is actually local government funding and the crisis in social care. So unless there's major reform and proper funding for councils, I don't really see how unitisation is going to help either of those things. In fact, I'm worried it'll actually make it worse. I have not been convinced by any evidence that I've seen that the reorganisation will make things more cost-effective or more efficient. If anything, the huge distraction and uncertainty that this has caused for years into the future is likely to do the opposite. And I really worry that a lot of good work currently being done by district councils, including this one, is going to come to a standstill. The White Paper talks about giving people more say. I don't see how making huge unitary councils and sitting under mayors is going to give ordinary people more control. Devolution, I suppose, centralisation. That said, we know we've got to be practical because this is happening. So we will be working constructively to make sure we get the best outcomes for both the staff that work for Charmwood and for the residents that live here. And if this has to be done, then in principle, we would support the positions that appear to be coming from the districts in Rutland for the smaller unitaries because we feel that would go at least some way to retain in the local government. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I believe councillor Snodgrass, you were in there as well, pushing your button?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I'm pleased to see this position statement come forward from the Labour Group, remembering that this Labour government who are looking to scrap borough district councils for unitary councils. I note in the joint media release from the leaders of Rutland County Council and the seven districts and borough councils in Leicestershire on Friday, the 10th of January, it is stated, we believe they are credible alternatives to large single unitary, which will facilitate a better sense of place, deliver savings, boost regional growth and provide better outcomes for our residents and businesses. In my view, this suggests that the leader supports a unitary council and agrees with the direction of travel outlined in the White Paper. How will the leader keep members informed on these decisions being made? Perhaps tonight, the leader will give details on what these alternatives are and what assurances can give the council staff and with his alternative, provide better outcomes for them as well as residents and businesses. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Corey Lousley, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that I very much welcome this position statement and I definitely supporting it. I think this is going to be a time of grace and certainty. There's multiple different plans on the table and it will be, you know, will require some working out. So I think it's important that Charmwood as a district sets out its position and that everybody knows where we stand with our proposal. This will be a time of grace and certainty. But I think ultimately, it will be positive. I think if we can get the right plan, we can strike the perfect balance between representation and a more efficient council. You know, there are challenges, funding, that we're going to have to face will be difficult, but I think ultimately, if we can get this right, it will be a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Glenn Matthews, please.
Yeah, you asked us for us not to repeat too much of what another councillor has said, so, but I would very much like to go on the record and say, as a Burstel councillor as well... But I would very much like to go on the record and say, as a Berstall councillor as well, which borders the Leicester City, I'd very much like to support councillor Rattray's comments that I'm very much on the same page as. So I won't want to tell anybody being said by councillor Rattray, so, but I just want to.
Thank you. Next on the list, councillor Seaton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do apologise for being late to this meeting. I feel under pressure now that I have to say something. And my earliest memories of Jules being on this council is the joking between us about city, Thurston being swallowed up by the city. And I think it was good banter at the time, along with the one-lit whopper. And they were, my first memories of him. And of course, my answer was over my dead body. But I, I think that it's, it's well within the city's sights of doing something like that with Thurston because there's not much distance between one part of the city, that part of the city and Thurston. But again, I reiterate, over my dead body. And I think all Thurston residents are quite proud to not be in the city. In fact, most of the city near the, along Humberston Lane also use the address of Thurston, not Leicester. So I would like to, to keep that. So I'm hoping that members on the other side of this room, the Greens, will support that and not let our villages be swallowed up any more than they already have by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else wishing to speak that isn't on here? Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I welcome this position statement because it is incredibly worrying for everybody in this room because I fear the reality is, if Loughborough does become a parish, we won't have this many people sitting here. We certainly won't have a mayor up there and we will have an accountant and a clerk and possibly twenty-five councillors. If that happens, it's a lot of if, but I really welcome this position statement on this whole matter because I think there's a lot going forward that is going to get selected. And I think it's really good that we have Loughborough Parish ready and prepared. But worryingly, for a lot of places, I think we've all got to brace ourselves for the breaking up of boroughs and districts. And I think it is going to be painful and to pretend that it's not is not fair to anybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Roberts. So is councillor Roberts your the last speaker? I can now call on councillor Mayor, please, to sum up. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to reassure all members of the council, actually, because councillor Rattray has brought it up about the city boundary potentially expanding. No negotiations of any type of, of what that might be entail has, has taken place. Yes, it might take place in the near future, but it hasn't at this current time. And I just wanted to assure, yes, what I said in scrutiny about involving any councillors in the wars that potentially might go over to the city early on, that's my promise to you and, and I want to get your feedback and your engagement so you can speak to your residents as well. But to say, if, if anything's given, I think the city have just said, you know, if they were to be in favour of that proposal, they would look at expanding their boundaries. And I think they've got the right to do that. Councillor Needham, I welcome your support for the smaller unitaries. I can understand it's not ideal. We've got a very efficient and very good council and we're about to lose it into potentially a unitary. So I can understand all the points that you've said. But I think we've got to be a bit realistic as to the direction travel as you are. If this is what the government wants and it's doing it across all the Shire districts and county councils, then Leicestershire can't be an exception, I believe. So we will look at it and any proposals that come forward, councillor Snott, from our discussions with our neighbours and the county and the city, we will bring that to Cabinet. So by scrutiny and then ultimately to council as well. So you're, everybody here will have the final say. It might not be something that we like to, to vote on, but you will get a, a say in it. But one thing councillor Snott, that you've touched on and spat our staff. And I just want to reassure our staff that it's business as usual for the next two or three years while we work through this. A lot of people will be concerned. I think the chief executive has had meetings with all the staff now to reassure them. And we've, and we can be open and candid as possible, but you're right, you know, staff will be worried about what their long-term prospects and their future are. Reece, fantastic that you're positive. And again, if this direction travel in the government is saying we should be, be looking at this. Yes, the strategic authority is the aim for the government, but the local government reorganisation is about to happen because, you know, a certain letter has gone in for a postponement of the elections at the county council. So it's just one of those where sometimes we react to the circumstances and the situation. However, we did get tipped off that this might happen because obviously the government, when they came in, they talked about it. So we have been preparing and planning and we have had officers look into this. So we are ahead of the curve on this one, but it's now, it's a matter of talking to our neighbours and making sure, our neighbouring authorities are making sure whatever happens and whatever comes forward is in the best interest of our residents and our, our staff. Councillor Matthew, if Berstall is one of those areas, you'll be the first to know. Sorry, you'll be the first to know. However, it's not on anybody's radar at this moment in time, but I will let anybody know if, if that's the case. Councillor Seaton, I've always banted with you that, because obviously Thurston and the, and the city are, are, you know, a metre away, as they say, but who knows? You know, you may be a city councillor in the future, you may be a unitary councillor in the future, who knows? I can't promise you anything, but I will fight the corner for Thurston for on your behalf. Councillor Robert? Roberts, Loughborough Town Council, yes, I can understand your concerns and worries, but I think we owe it to the residents to explore the idea. I don't think we can leave the largest town in the district without a, a town council or be, be unparished. So we are going to look at this. And if local government reorganisation does happen, that would be something that I think we would, as a whole council, want to implement so people have that representation, local representation. Because there's a big things that happen in, in Loughborough and in the area, very big ticket items. So it's just one of those where we would need closer oversight of those. But yeah, and just to finally wrap up, discussions have been held between districts and borough councils with Rutland County Council, Leicestershire City Council and Leicestershire County Council. There are differing views about the best configurations of local government under the proposed SA L L R. County councils have now indicated that they intend to apply for, to postpone their elections and proceed with a single county unitary option with some areas ceded to the city council. It is my view and the administration's view, just to, just to wrap up, that smaller unitary councils will be more beneficial for our residents and for our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Mayor. All this is noted. Item nine, motions on notice. There is one motion on notice on the agenda submitted in accordance with full council procedure, rule nine point one-two. The notion, the notion, the motion was submitted by the Green group and is about neighbourhood planning. So item nine point one, neighbourhood planning, page two one five. Councillor Infield, would you like to introduce the motion on notice regarding neighbourhood planning?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Neighbourhood plans are an important element in the planning process. They are part of the borough's development plan, sitting alongside the local plan. Importantly, they provide communities with direct power to develop a shared vision for their immediate environments and shape the development and growth of their local area. It's become apparent recently that these neighbourhood plans can become redundant, not just through expiry, but because they have failed to keep up with planning guidance. This is frustrating to those who have developed such plans and crucially, it defies communities from having a direct influence on the planning process as it affects their neighbourhoods. This will be even more important following local government restructuring. Town and parish councillors are not planning experts and will often fail to keep up with planning guidance. In contrast, Charmwood planning officers will be aware when changes to planning guidance occur that could invalidate published neighbourhood plans. This motion is to mandate Charmwood's planning department to contact relevant town and parish councils with information on such changes to planning guidance and to provide brief guidance as to how they should proceed to maintain valid neighbourhood plans. Madam Mayor, I move the motion on notice as set out on page two one five.
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton?
I second this, Madam Mayor, and reserve my right to speak.
Okay, so if any councillors would like to speak, please indicate using your console. Councillor Chris O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. By way of information to other council members, help and guidance is available for parish councils to help them draw up neighbourhood plans. I have been in contact with a couple of parish councils who have used these guidance. Well, people and companies who have offered guidance and, and information about how to draw up a neighbourhood plan that works. As councillor Infield said, often they are very disappointed because they, they've spent a lot of time drawing up their plan, but they've not taken into account the fact that the planning guidelines have moved on. So all I would say was I fully support this motion and I would direct any parish councillors and parish councils towards individuals and organisations that can offer them up-to-date guidance on how to produce an effective plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, so I go back to councillor Hamilton, you reserved your right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I welcome the opportunity to second this motion. It recognises a couple of key important aspects. One is the importance of neighbourhood plans and recognises the amount of effort and work that both parish and town councils put into creating neighbourhood plans and the important role that it plays in the planning process. But it also recognises the asymmetry of knowledge in this area. That basically Charmwood is a local planning authority, planning officers are the actual experts in this area. And therefore, it is, I think, to be welcomed to, for Charmwood to consider processes in place to ensure that if there is a change, such as a change like the national planning policy framework, that if it impacts the neighbourhood plan, that that is communicated to the parishes. So I think Charmwood has an important role in signposting where there are changes that could impact the weight given to neighbourhood plans. And so therefore, I fully support the concept behind this motion.
Thank you, thank you. I now call on councillor Infield to sum up.
I think this is an important motion. Neighbourhood plans are critical. They're, they're the one chance that a local community has to really express its views for how it wants to see its immediate neighbourhood develop. As I've said already, parishes and town councils are not necessarily where the expertise in planning lies, but it lies here. And I think it, it's good that we can show that Charmwood is supporting the parishes and towns in their desire to develop and maintain validity of these neighbourhood plans. I don't see this as being very onerous. I expect that when planning changes, that it's simply, an email is put together by one of the planning officers and, and sent to the relevant parishes and towns. But I do think it's a way in which we can be supporting this important structure. And I see that the government has reaffirmed the continuation and importance of neighbourhood plans. And as I said briefly, with the restructuring and inevitably larger units of local authorities that we can expect, neighbourhood plans will be even more critical in allowing a valid sense of place which will otherwise, I think, be lost with, with the loss of, you know, Charmwood and, and other district and borough councils. So I look forward to you supporting the vote positively. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm now putting the motion to the vote. Please use your consoles. Just missing a few. Has everybody voted? We're missing a few. Two, two more apparently need to vote in. Anybody not pushed the right button? It's carried anyway, I don't think. Yeah, okay.
I think somebody's voted against.
Somebody's voted against, no.
The vote's carried, mate.
Okay, the vote is carried. Thank you. Item ten, questions on notice. As a reminder, the questions that councillors have submitted and the answers to them are in the supplements pack. I will call on those councillors who have indicated that they wish to ask a supplementary question. Supplementary questions must relate directly and exclusively to the questions submitted and any other supplementary questions will not be permitted. Each councillor will have one minute to ask their supplementary question and the councillor responding will also be able to speak for up to one minute. So item ten point one, Compliance with Housing Act two thousand and four. Councillor Smidovitch, would you like to ask your supplementary question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In relation to compliance with the Housing Act, could the lead member tell us how many retrospective planning applications for HMOs have been received since two thousand and eighteen? And how many fines for operating without a licence have been issued? And the retrospective licenses granted or refused? Bearing in mind that the database was not operationable for some period of time. So it would also be helpful if the planning department could tell us how many rooms are now available in purpose-built student accommodation as numerous warehouses and building conversions have also emerged. Perhaps it's time that the scrutiny panel considered an article four for Loughborough to stop any further family properties being converted to HMOs when they're not needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton, do you wish to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for that supplementary question. It's kind of, it requires quite a detailed response. I think perhaps the best approach is for you to perhaps put that into an email to, and direct it to perhaps the, the relevant officer and they can give you the detailed response back. That may be a way of progressing this. Thank you.
Thank you. So item ten point two, cleaning of decomposing leaves. Councillor Deborah Taylor, would you like to ask your supplementary question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the response and for the link. I checked the roads in Anthony which should be swept every two weeks during the autumn. And I've actually reported three of those roads in the past two weeks due to decomposting roads. So the process is not working as it should and the roads have not been swept. This was one of the Labour Group's manifesto pledges to keep our streets litter free and regularly swept. So will the lead member advise what action will be taken to ensure that the process is improved and that this is followed as set out on their website?
Thank you. Councillor Anne Gray, do you wish to respond?
Thank you, yes, please. And thank you very much for actually reporting those three issues. I will ask for forms to be monitored and if there is an area which is getting a lot of forms in, we can have a look at this. And I would also like to say, just to chip in and say that there are other forms that are really useful in that section, including things like if there's dog poo on the pavement, you can ask for it to be removed. So do please use the forms and thank you very much.
Thank you. So item ten point three, employer national insurance contributions. Councillor Baines, would you like to ask your supplementary question?
To some extent, but I wonder if the lead member for finance could just indicate, given that, particularly on the item, that contractors may seek to recover additional NI costs through, through contractual mechanisms. It says, but is not able to assess the total impact. I think it would be prudent for us to estimate the impact and to have some sort of provision for this in the accounts. So I guess my supplementary. So I guess my supplementary question is, could the lead member for finance indicate when you might have a forecast of the likely increase in national insurance on some contractors' charges, as this is unlikely to be compensated by the Majesty's Government? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
councillor Ashcroft, do you wish to respond?
I think it's a fair question, I think we've not worked through it at the moment, and we're all in some way dependent on the contractors making their claims for this, so it's not totally within our gift to set a timetable for this, so it's kind of, we're waiting to see what's coming in. We've done some initial calculations, and we do think we've got enough elasticity within the current budget to cope with it. But again, at the moment, we're not sure the exact amounts or the degree of compensation we would get for them, but we don't think it would be significant in the context of the whole budget.
Thank you. So item 10.4, Planning Officers. Councillor Baines, would you like to ask your supplementary question?
I certainly would, Madam Mayor. This is becoming a little bit of a bee in my bonnet, I'm afraid. And I'm just thinking, to what scope is there to increase the base pay of planning officers at the council to aid recruitment, or to change the grading structure of planning officer jobs? Now, I'm well aware that I've just voted for pay policy to go through as it is, but I'm just wondering if we can look at the grading structure of planning officer jobs to attract more officers and reduce the overall expenditure on planning subcontractors, which is very substantial, and I must say, unbudgeted.
Thank you. councillor Hamilton, wish to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you councillor Baines for the supplementary question. My understanding is all the fees have been actually already fed into pay, there's been a number of things that are being looked at. You're talking about really what is a national problem in the kind of, the lack of planning officers. So the number of initiatives we have taken, in particular working with the, as you said in the answer, with the university, in getting an intern, and we have looked at a number of initiatives with regard to recruitment, and the type of market supplements that's possible. So this is something that is, that has been examined to try and encourage, it's really a nationwide problem in trying to recruit planning officers.
Thank you. Item 10.5, Local Development Scheme Community Infrastructure Levy. Councillor Boca, would you like to ask your supplementary question?
Yes, thank you for the answer, as pushed out in the papers, but could the leader or his lead member reassure me that all efforts will be made to get our new local plan through its entire programme as soon as possible, including the SIL, and not expose us to a lack of finance in providing the necessary infrastructure for new developments in the borough? I say this because there is continuous criticism of new developments going through in the borough that do not have the infrastructure necessary to support and make the new development sustainable.
Thank you. councillor Hamilton?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yes, thank you for that supplementary question. Yes, we are making every effort to try and progress this. It's been rather an unfortunate state of affairs we've had of late in terms of our relationship. It has been worked on, it is being resolved. We are certainly keen, Charmwood has done everything it can at each stage to progress this and move it forward. We will carry on putting that effort in to ensure that it is delivered, and of course the SIL which we're looking at is there in place to ensure that we get the funding for the more strategic infrastructure of any new developments, and that is something that we are certainly keen to progress and are putting every effort into doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10.6, Housing Assessments. Councillor Snart, would you like to ask your supplementary question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is welcome to see the progress being made with application assessments since I first raised the matter at council on 4th of November. However, from the information supply, there seems to be a long way to go to meet the performance indicated target levels. Previously, it was stated that the backlog of assessments would be cleared by the end of November 2024, but now this has been changed to quarter four of the financial year. Would the lead member update members on the performance position at the earliest opportunity after quarter four?
councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for that supplementary question, councillor Snart. Yes, we will give the information that you asked for when available. It's important to note that, yes, it was originally says, oh, done by the end of November, the end of the year, but if you note the numbers, they are collapsing. In other words, the one from, what was it, October, it was, there was 672, and they were going to be fully assessed, which was down to 225 by January, so the numbers are coming down very rapidly, so we hope to clear the backlog quite quickly, and officers are working on achieving that. And the quarter four situation will be communicated as soon as it is available. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10.7, Delivery of Housing Developments. Councillor Snart, would you like to ask your supplementary question?
Okay, Madam Mayor. Charmwood Labour manifesto states, Labour understands the need for their right homes in the right places. In three examples I have demonstrated, that is far from meeting the Labour pledge to fix our housing crisis. I'm afraid the explanation given in the reply does not overcome the large imbalance in the required borough housing needs, and not in line with the Labour manifesto. In my view, with the three examples I have demonstrated, there is not a fine balance between 86% and double the number of large dwellings being built on a site. Therefore, may I ask again, is the lead member really concerned about this imbalance with the housing mix as outlined in the Labour manifesto? It doesn't seem so from the answer to my question. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Hamilton, wish to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that supplementary question, councillor Snart. I mean, yes, I appreciate your frustration with this area and getting the right housing mix. The bottom line is, what we give is guidance, and these have gone to Plans Committee, and they have been approved. Now, I attend Plans Committee when I can, and I watch it online when I can't, and it is given proper scrutiny, and members of this committee do look at the balance of it, and it's difficult, but sometimes the weighted balance is that you have to approve it. We should note that we actually have rejected applications, we did one in East Goscombe, we rejected one in Coysington, so some developments are turned down, but yes, I wish it could be otherwise, but you must remember it's a balance between guidelines versus the viability, as evidenced by developers in making these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10.8, Draft Local Plan. Councillor Snart, would you like to ask your supplementary question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I turn again to the Charmwood Labour manifesto stating, new development needs to provide the infrastructure and services to be able to cater for the additional people moving into an area. Does the leader understand that not being able to secure the funding for the strategic highway infrastructure will cause enormous problems for the future generations? This outlined in the Labour manifesto provide the infrastructure and service our residents need. I note the leader in his response, the LPA does not have the technical expertise to determine the transport mitigation. Is he suggesting that a unitary council would overcome this problem?
councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for that question, councillor Snart. As I say, we are progressing, trying to progress with the draft local plan. Currently, we have the existing planning policies in place. The knowledge of what's described in terms of strategic transport infrastructure comes from the highways authorities, that's a plenty issue, so they need to give us the information when we're developing these things, when a development was given to us, we have a legal obligation to assess that, or else we could, a piece of determination. But as I say, this is something that, there are existing things in place, they don't have the weighting, we're trying to develop a local plan. In terms of future local government structures, whoever is the highways authority will have that knowledge to help assist us in recognising what is required.
Thank you. Item 10.9, Electric Vehicle Charging Points. Councillor Fryer, would you like to ask your supplementary question?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you very much for the, to the officer and councillor for the full reply. I appreciate a lot that it is out of Charmwood's hands, it goes to the Highways Authority, LCC. However, I have a couple of points I'd like to raise. In the answer, it says the Beehive Lane, Mount Storey Car Park, Charmwood Borough Council then, one, has a, has passed charges. The charge is operational but due for replacement when? The other questions I have, the countywide project team is finalising a procurement document pending successful procurement installation schedule for spring of 2025. Is it on schedule? The project scope for Plex D has been widened to include rural EV car clubs. Where and what are these car clubs, and are they in the Charmwood area? Thank you.
councillor Beverley Gray, do you wish to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Fryer. I will be very happy to find out the details to be able to answer those questions fully, councillor Fryer. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank officers for the very, very comprehensive answer. Obviously, as a county councillor, councillor Fryer will know that on-street EV points is the remit of the county, but I am very pleased with the progress that the borough council have made in very straightened economic circumstances, you know, after 14 years of austerity, to access grants and where the criteria permits to start to install those EV charge points in several of its car parks, and we will be continuing that work. Thank you.
Item 11, Minute References. There are no minute references. Item 12, Urgent Executive Decisions Exempted from Calling, page 216. This is a report to inform the council of decisions which were exempted from calling in accordance with scrutiny committed procedure 11.9. If any councillors would like to ask a question, please indicate your wish to do so by pressing your button on your console. Okay, thank you. So that's to be noted. I'm now moving on to item 13, Nomination of Mayor-Elect. Are there any nominations for mayor-elect for the council year 2025 to 2026? councillor Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I propose that councillor David Northridge should be nominated as mayor-elect for the 2025-2026 council year.
Thank you. So if any councillors would like to speak, please indicate using your console. Okay, so I call on councillor Mayor to sum up.
Nothing further to add, just to ask congratulations to councillor David Northridge's nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm now putting the motion to the vote, please use your consoles. Pleased to announce that's unanimous, so congratulations. Would you like to say anything, councillor Northridge?
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Mayor. Thank you councillor Boca. It's much appreciated, I'm looking forward to the year. I did vote for myself now, and we're still one short, so I, but listen, we don't need any names at this point in time, but thanks ever so much, and I'm looking forward to enjoying the year. I have to tell you, the bar's been set pretty high this year.
Which bar?
Councillor Bradshaw. So there's a lot to live up to, but I'm looking forward to the challenge. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you very much. I'm sure you'll do a superb job. So I'm now moving on to item 14, Nomination of Deputy Mayor-Elect. So are there any nominations for deputy mayor-elect for the council year 2025 to 26? councillor Boca?
Madam Mayor, I propose that councillor Colin Hamilton be nominated as deputy mayor-elect for the year 2025/26 council year.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to second this.
Thank you. So if any councillors would like to speak, please indicate using your console. Okay. So I go back to councillor Boca to sum up. Right, so now putting the motion to the votes, please vote using your consoles. councillor Hamilton, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to say thank you. Again, I also voted for myself, mainly because it's a way of escaping answering so many questions at council. So I'm looking forward to the role, so thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm now moving on to item 15, Appointments to Committees. On the 21st of November 2024, the head of democracy took a delegated decision to make appointments to the following committees. Audit Committee, councillor Infield was taken off the audit committee and replaced by councillor Bellamy. Finance and Performance Scrutiny Committee, councillor Lawrence was appointed to the vacant vice-chair position. Plans Committee, councillor Lawrence was taken off the plans committee and replaced by councillor Infield. Scrutiny Commission, councillor Rattray became the chair of the scrutiny commission, replacing councillor Seton. This information is to note, since the delegated decision was published, the head of democracy has been advised of further changes to committee memberships. So I call on councillor Boca to propose the changes.
I'm going to read the following information. Councillor Seton to be taken off and replaced by councillor Charles, and on the Finance and Performance Scrutiny Committee, councillor Charles comes off and is replaced by councillor Seton.
I second this, Madam Mayor.
So if any councillors would like to speak, please indicate using your console. So they're not, they're not? councillor Boca? Nothing more to say, so we take a vote on this? Yes, so can we take a vote on this, please? Please use your console. So the motion is carried, thank you very much. So now, if I'm correct, that takes us to the close of business. So thank you very much, and the next scheduled meeting of the council is on the 24th of February 2025, and I look forward to seeing somebody on Thursday if you're not sat on any committees. Thank you very much and have a safe trip home.